Me and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you haven't signed up, there's a sign up sheet on the table there. Appreciate everyone signing up there. Okay, just kind of go over our public meeting rules and procedures, so everyone is aware of that. At such meetings, the public must be afforded a reasonable opportunity to give its opinion on matters considered by the Select Board, so long as orders maintained. Such public comment is subject to reasonable rules established by the Chair of the Select Board 1 VSA 312. And at the beginning of each Select Board meeting, there will be up to 15 minutes afforded for open public comment. Each portion shall be limited to three minutes unless by majority vote, the Select Board increases the time. By majority vote, the Select Board may increase the time for public comment and may adjust the agenda items accordingly. A Select Board meeting is a meeting open to the public, not a public meeting. Public comment on issues discussed by the Select Board, if not offered during open public comment period, may be offered during the meeting with the permission of the Chair or majority vote. Such comments, if permitted, should be limited to three minutes unless there is a majority vote. The Select Board can increase the time for public comment. Thank you. Okay. Review and approve the agenda. We have one additional item, a facilities use agreement that's on the table. So we can, we'll take that up. Any other additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, review of the November 25 regular meeting. Any additions, corrections?
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a special December 5 meeting minutes. Any additions, corrections to that?
I think that corrections are the last paragraph.
Page three of three.
Yeah, the three of three at the bottom.
Instead of 3.5 percent, it should have been the fee for managing the Procter Fund, when it has merged with the town fund would give you the town, the rate that they're getting, which is .6 to .7.
I think we need to clarify too that the comment, the, see, account could be combined with more of a Procter Trust account. Because we're not really combining the account. I think we need to be careful about how that's worded. So I'd like to see some kind of change in that. Not really combining that.
No, it's not combining the money or the investment policy.
Right.
It's just combining the total dollars.
The management.
The management, combined management maybe with the more of a Procter Trust.
It could be combined with the more of a Procter Trust account, which would result in a lower management fee to the town. Anyway, could be managed with the, instead of combined with, right?
Managed with, yes.
Yeah.
And then at 3.5 is really 0.6 to 0.7.
Motion to approve with the correction?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move into guests and anybody that's going to speak, if you'd use the podium, that would be helpful and make sure PEG TV gets to hear everything, so. And we're happy to have Abigail Friedman from VLCT on our Town Manager Search. Thanks for driving down in this kind of miserable weather, but at least it isn't freezing yet.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for having me and inviting me to be here and for asking us to submit a proposal to conduct, to help you recruit a new town manager when Stan retires. I sent a packet of information that outlines the services that we provide in our recruitment service and samples of the types of materials that we produce as part of that service. And I'm happy to walk through as much or little detail as anyone would like. Just quick background, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns has been providing this type of service for towns for over 30 years. And the intention is to serve as sort of back office support for the decisions that the Select Board will ultimately make on who to hire for a town manager.
Pardon me?
Her proposal's not in here.
I think it's a new budget, by the way.
Yeah, it was with the budget. Yeah, with the budget.
Oh, no, it was.
It was with the budget.
The last special meeting. With the budgets.
Was it, it's in the, with the budget?
It was with the budget.
Okay.
There's a copy of it.
I find what you're just giving us an overview of.
Okay, sure. So one of the most important things we think to have in place before you start the search is an up-to-date job description. This is the foundation for what you are looking for and what applicants will know that you are looking for in a town manager. And once the job description and the hiring salary range is finished, is complete, then we would move forward with talking with you about a timeline for the entire search, as well as the types of advertising that you would do. There's a sample advertising sheet in the proposal as well. And there are a number of different places that we traditionally advertise for positions for recruitment that have seemed to have worked so far in terms of the searches we've conducted. And there's a budget for the advertising that can range anywhere from $2,000 to $3,500. So it depends on the types of advertising and the length of the advertising, but we would work with you on that. Then, much of the cost is associated with the staff time for myself and Heather Law in my office. What we do is once she places all the ads, the applications come to our office and we collect them there. This helps maintain confidentiality and then we can also keep up the communication with the candidates. And then when the deadline, the application deadline comes in, is, happens, we work with you on how you would like the first round interviews to be conducted, whether the Select Board will be handling the entire process, if there's going to be a search committee composed of Select Board members and/or others that might help. The first initial applications that come in lately, they've ranged from, I think, 45 to 30 or 25 is the number of applications that comes in. And it sounds like a lot, but once they are, once you look through them, it actually, you're able to discern the types of candidates that might rise to the top. We'll talk more about that. Part of working with us is that we can provide guidance on the review process, the interview process, your comments on the job description. We help create the ad, placing the ads, as I've said. And then we can maintain all the communication with the candidates. So you decide when those interviews, which candidates you would want to interview and then, and when, and we would set up the interviews. We would help you with questions to make sure you are, the list of questions are legal for the municipal employment realm, which is different than the private realm. And then sort of as the number of applicants that are interviewed is windowed down and you get to the point of a finalist, we help with background and reference checks. We have sample manager contracts. And we can sort of help advise in all aspects of the process. One piece of the proposal packet, there's a letter, on the second page of the letter, at the bottom, there's a list of contacts for Select Board members or search committee chairs that have worked with us fairly recently, that are happy to chat with you if you'd like to check in with the town that we've worked with. Right now, it's somewhat interesting that there are a number of searches going on. And as far as I know, for you in terms of, you're starting well ahead of time. I mean, six months is sort of the longest amount of time it might take generally, typically, to fill one of these positions. So if we're looking at June, you're in good time. And I was going to talk about the labor cost, I forgot. So on the third page, on the services, there's a chart of pricing. The advertising costs I mentioned, the administrative support and oversight, it can be, range from $3,000 to $4,000. It's, we have hourly rates and we fill out time sheets. Nothing is a surprise for you all because we're here to, you're a member organization. We want to help you with this process. Then the amount of staff labor for VLCT sometimes depends on the number of applications that come in or just the amount of time it takes to do, to do various things. So also in this chart, you'll see it may or may not be relevant whether there's any travel dollars for finalists to come and do onsite interviews. The background checks, there's both civil, criminal background checks that we work with a private investigator. When we hire an external subcontractor, like the investigator or any of the advertising, it's just a direct pass-through. We just deal with the paperwork part, so you don't have to. So that's the main sort of cost. There's mostly estimates because we can't know for sure until we, until we get into it. And I think one thing that is a major point for the Board to decide before launching a search is we really recommend that the search is as confidential as possible. You attract more candidates who may currently be employed to throw their hat in the ring if they can know that at least through the beginning process of the search, that there's some confidentiality. Certainly when you get later on in the process, when folks are coming to town to interview, or meeting staff, or touring town hall, there's no way that any of that can be insured by anyone, so.
My question for the advertising costs, I'm assuming part of this is based on how far-flung our advertising is? Is that correct? As in advertising nationally versus advertising within New England or?
Sure, yeah, the question, that question comes up. There's one national slash international resource that we recommend regardless. It's called, because it's a professional association for city and county managers. And so that is a high cost, but we find that it's one of the most relevant. And even though you're advertising through an organization that's not based here, folks who want to come back here, maybe they're somewhere else and they want to return home, or they're even here already but looking for work or in the New England area, it's one of the better resources. We also have relationships with our sister organizations in New England so that we have some lower advertising and some reciprocal agreements for advertising in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Maine, those places. We advertise, we also do free advertising with university graduate, masters of public affairs programs because same thing, there may be folks who are alumni and want to come back to this area even though they've been working somewhere else.
If we advertise with the league, it's free, right?
Yep.
So for a New Year newsletter, that, that must circulate pretty well too, right?
Yeah, and online, I think a lot of folks look now, even more so, it's the online piece that folks really find helpful. But the local papers, we always do some local as well. But we'll work with you to manage that cost. And no cost is, you approve any of these costs before they are, before they go through.
I just have one more question regarding the administrative support piece. That can also be reduced, right, depending on how much we take on versus what you take on?
There are some efficiencies there, but there are some pieces that it just makes sense to have us do. But I think one, one piece that may be a little different, we actually didn't do the search. We did the search for the administrator position here. And one thing that we do now is all of the applications that come in, we don't do any initial review of them. We pass along all of those applications with some guidance to help structure how anyone might be reviewing the applications. So that is something that, that's a time that we're not spending. And really, it's better for the folks that are part of the hiring process to have the first look at those applications. But we have some templates to help sort of track the criteria that you've advertised for and that are in the job description and how well these applicants may meet those criteria. So that's one cost-saving area.
Any questions, Tom?
All set.
I'm good.
What easy one. The, first, does the background check, that's a separate number from what you've got in here.
Oh, there may be a, just a typo, yeah.
No, it's just, I don't see a number. I see staff in here.
There's background checks, there's a page at the very back.
It's 350 to 500.
Yeah, so 350 is, yeah, it's right here, it's the very last page. And that's for someone who potentially has lived in state for 10 years. And you don't, the investigator doesn't have to check records in any other states. I think the 500 is just an average of, someone may have lived in Maine for a little bit or something.
Yes, no, I think that'll give us something to work on and then we can get back in touch with Abby.
Sure.
Well, thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Absolutely, let me know if you have any questions.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don't go for it. And let's see, our other guest, Andy Hutchinson, would you want to just step up and give us a, be able to answer some questions that anybody might have regarding your report that's in the packet here? We've got one, one section already marked out for logging then for?
Not at this time.
Not at this time yet, okay.
It's planned, but it's not, the marking has not happened.
Yeah. And you're recommending that we extend the road up there and make the necessary repairs? And I got the impression that that would have a direct effect on the price that we might get on future?
Yes, it would have a direct effect on the next timber sale, as well as any future ones. So it's an infrastructure improvement that would be there permanently.
So would this just be starting up on the upper end or basically the entire road up through or?
Primarily on the upper end from the existing landing further out, heading to the east.
Okay, so you're extending it from the landing out?
Yes.
Because we have a mile of road up to the landing now, maybe not that much, roughly?
Yes, there's at least that much.
So I'm questioning, because I feel like every time we get a figure, it's different. Originally, because it started out like every three years, we get $300,000. And all of a sudden, with the fees and cost, it came down to like 125. And then we got, the most recent was five to 10 years, and it was netting us $100,000, correct? Was there something that was saying that?
It shouldn't be in that, it was on the table tonight.
Right, but then we got another, there was another one after this.
It's on top of that one, if you turn it over, it's an email.
So it was netting 189 and now it's 100. And originally it seemed like it was.
Those are two different sale projections.
Right.
One is for the first five-year period, which would include the road extension. The second one that was requested is for a follow-up sale after that.
Right, okay. Because it seemed to me like it was $100,000 with the, and you were being very conservative, with the potential of an additional $100,000, that you could have had two cuts. Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get to know if it was three to five years or if it's five to 10 years and if we're talking 189 dollars net over 10 years.
One of the, one of the limitations that the watershed property has is the access. And because of that access and the steep truckload out of there, logging is limited or the removal of logs from the property is limited to summer-only logging because it's just physically not safe for a log truck to come out of there in the wintertime. And because there is a lot of water and a lot of streams on that property, it also restricts that to relatively dry periods during the summer and fall. So that can narrow the window of opportunity to remove sawlogs from there. So my second five-year projection was quite conservative because you don't know what you're going to run into for weather periodically. If you, if that first five-year projection runs into a bunch of poor summer logging conditions, that may extend that period of time. And the second projection, if the weather is acceptable and quite favorable, you might get two sales in that same period of time that I projected with the, you know, that $100,000 figure was just for a single sale.
So I can be clear, the best-case scenario would be over the next 10 years, 200, $389,000 net after extending the road.
Yes, given.
Absolute best-case scenario.
Given current understandings of existing markets, which we really can't forecast what's going to happen 10 years from now, but we can take a guess.
Any other questions for Andy?
Thanks for coming out on a bad night.
Yes.
Appreciate it very much.
Yes, please. Has everybody signed in? Okay. Justin Lynnholm, would you kind of, and you're from Mendon, actually?
Yes, I own land in Chittenden. I pay $12,500 worth of taxes in Chittenden every year, if anybody would like to know. My theme, the last few times I've been speaking to you folks, is know your property if you're going to sell it. And the last meeting, which was Thursday, I flamed that. And I was discouraged by what I saw as a lack of understanding of your land. Bruce, you said that the full value of that land, as appraised, was $1.5 million by Bill Scranton. That is not the full value. It does not, this is what it says in there. This value is for the real estate only and does not include the valuation of the marketable timber, which according to forester, Andrew Hutchinson, is substantial. Also, it was mentioned that last meeting, that it's all steep. That is not true. Only the bottom is steep, and you also have another access that nobody seems to know about that could be made into a very good access. Also, your water, you keep dismissing the idea that your water could have some value. Don't do that. You folks mentioned you have to bring logging trucks up that steep road and drag them up with a logs getter, and you are laughing about this. No way. You don't bring water trucks up to that property, you bring the water down. I don't know what's going on here, but this doesn't sound good, that somebody who's trying to buy your land from you, you dismiss and knock down your own land. You should be doing the opposite of that, with anything. And it just, something doesn't seem right here, that you're trying to dismiss what you have. That's all I need to say, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Joan Licardi? Or John, oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not intended to speak.
Kim Kendall?
I also am not in time to speak, thank you.
Okay. Matt Trombley?
I guess I'll take my chance to blabber. First of all, thank you all for your efforts. And for those of you that don't know me, Matt Trombley, resident here at Procter, grew up in the town of Pittsburgh, I too, taxpayer, but have a greater concern and interest and had heard through the grapevine of the possible sale of the property in the last couple of months. I'm an avid outdoorsman, lifelong hunter, fisherman, snowmobiler, cross-country skier, been on that property dozens of times, was a former member of the Chittenden Damper Snowmobile Club and helped install corridor trail on there back in the 1990s. Also, I have a family camp in the town of Chittenden that lies on the middle road and looks directly down on this wonderful, beautiful piece of property. Greatly concerns me to see our landscape in the state of Vermont change. And as we all know, we continue to see land be posted in lack of options for recreational use of any sort at an alarming rate. And saddens me to think that there could be a remote possibility that if this land was sold to any buyer and a private landowner without the option to post a very large piece of land that could possibly be closed off to any sort of recreational use. Obviously, understanding the tax burden that all of our towns have and the difficulties you folks have and trying to keep the wheels spinning, to keep the schools open and everything going, is a huge challenge today. But I also too question the value of the offer made by the prospective buyer in comparison to timber values, water values, but more so the effects that losing this piece of land could have on so much public enjoyment. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Vermont Outdoor Guides Association and the Rocky Mountain Out Foundation. And our big challenge is keeping land open. And it really, really worries me to see a piece of land that lies so close to Green Mountain National Forest, other town forests, that we could lose the chance forever should the buyer decide that it's his land and nobody's going to have any access to it. should the buyer decide that it's his land and nobody's going to have any access to it. I encourage you to think long and hard before taking this offer of any buyer and also to think about the option of down the road of putting it to a public vote and allowing folks to have their chance to say on what they feel this land should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Turnovich?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be able to address you guys tonight. I think Matt actually touched on most of the issues and concerns that I had. I feel that this is really a huge piece of property, a large chunk of money, and I don't want to see us make a rash decision. It's a lot of responsibility for you guys to take on your own. I feel the same way as Matt, that this is something that probably should be put to a public vote. But moreover, I just want to make sure, and I am late to this whole topic. I didn't find out about it until a few days ago, but I think it's really important that we do our due diligence and make 100% sure whichever direction we go in, it's the best decision for the town. And the fact that there's an offer on the table that could be pulled back at the end of the month, it doesn't matter. If that's really that valuable, a piece of property, somebody else will step forward if that's the decision to be made, and I don't think that should factor in in any way, that there's a deadline, meaning take your time, do your due diligence. And again, I feel the same as Matt, that I think this is such a large scope for the town that it really should go to a public vote. Thank you.
And Judy. Steve Follett?
Hi, my name is Steve Follett. I've been a resident of the town since I moved here from another state I won't mention. But I wanted to thank the select board for this chance to speak and thank you beyond that for the time and effort that I know goes into making a real major decision like this, because this is a major decision. I'm sure by now you all appreciate that, that there's a lot of emotion involved. But beyond that, there's this huge piece of property, this thing with some value. We don't, we aren't quite sure what it is, but it's substantial. We know there's timber on the land, quite a bit of timber, and we know that we can sell that timber, which gives us a pretty nice return. We're talking 20, 30,000 dollars a year by some estimates, even over the 10-year period. So there is that value. There's the value of the water that's still on that land and bubbles right out of the ground. I drank that water for years. My kids drank it. We washed in it. It's good water. I don't think we should just, you know, say that it doesn't worth anything or it's worth very little or it's too hard to get out. There may come a day when that water becomes extremely valuable. The other thing is, we're talking about what we're going to do with the money from this. And I sat in the meeting a couple of nights ago where some people made presentations about how they'd invest the money and how they'd protect our principal and how here's how much it was going to cost and here was the return. I think you all understand that that stuff, you know, at the bottom line of every advertisement for that kind of pitch is nothing is guaranteed in the market, okay? We're at the end of a long, long stretch of market increase. Now, I'm not saying it's going to fall tomorrow, but who knows? We don't want to take that money for that land, dump it in the market, and all of a sudden turn around and say, oh my God, it's half what we started with. And the land is gone. Okay, that's pretty much what I have to say. I think the value of the land far exceeds anything that we might get in the market, you know? If we take the money and run, I think that the value of the land is always going to be there and I don't think the town should give it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Dale Christie?
I don't have anything to say other than I agree with Matt and Judy and Steve. Nothing further to add to that.
Sure. Okay. Joshua Hart?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm on the state leadership team for the Backcountry Hunters and Anglers, which is one of the largest or fastest-growing conservation initiatives in our country. I also am a concerned bystander from Hubbardton, Vermont. I first went on that property when I was eight years old, so that was probably 1986. My father brought me up to the spring, we bush wrapped up to the spring. And I spent a week there kind of as a coming-of-age camping trip. That's pretty special to me. I've brought my own sons there. I have three of them. I also am an outdoor educator at neighboring Otter Valley High School. And I have brought many students to this very special area. I hear the dollars and cents and I get it and I, you know, I have trouble paying my own bills. I understand. But what I'm not hearing is, in understanding that the largest portion of Vermont's GDP right now is outdoor recreation. That's, the intrinsic value of this land goes well beyond what you may get from a one-time payout. And I really ask you to think about that. From there, the idea of this truly amazing piece of property, which by the way is the headwaters for one of the finest wild trout streams in the state of Vermont, going into a private investor's privy, I mean, it breaks my heart. In Vermont, we've got a long tradition. There are so many conservation-based initiatives that I'm sure would love to have a discussion with you. And, you know, I'm projecting here, but you may find that you're getting an offer of similar value from someone that would make sure that that land stays open. For me, open lands to play in, to commune with are what it means to be a Vermonder. That's why I live here and I am proud of that. That's why my parents lived here and that's why I raise my kids here. So I ask, and I believe BHA asks, that you cease and desist selling this to private enterprise. Thank you.
Adriana, I'm not sure on the pronunciation of the last name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have hiked the property. My daughter, I have actually backpacked with her. She's five. She's coming up right now, actually. But we have been on the property. I think that there's so much value to that property, more than a dollar sign, to get, you know, your child out and off electronics. You know, that's one of those things that often is posted and we can't do that. I mean, there's woods here right in town that you can't go in because they're posted. And, you know, it's just one of those things that would be horrendous to see gone. I think it would be wonderful if it was left to the community and maybe in the future, if, you know, hard times come, there's something else. But I think as of right now, it would be better left alone. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Digital device. Deanna Burnham?
I also would just like to voice my opinion on keeping the land. I don't think that the town is in dire needs financially to sell the land, especially before you check the value, the value of the water, the value of the land, and the value to the surrounding communities. Has anybody approached Chittenden to see what their thoughts are on us selling the land? Have they, maybe, maybe they'd like to purchase land. But before you sell the land, please check into the water, the value, and listen to the communities. Thank you.
Adam Miller?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to talk. My name's Adam Miller. I'm actually from Williamstown, Vermont, so ways up the road. But I wanted to talk here as a person that travels around and recreates on public land and spends money in the adjacent community. Travel around the United States, enjoying my pastime of hunting and fishing, and I spend a lot of money going out there and doing it and providing for my family. I grew up in an outdoor family with my mom and my dad and, you know, learned to hunt and fish through them and it's something that I really cherish and I appreciate. I have a three-year-old daughter who I hope to share that with. And one of the ways I feel like that we're able to do that is through recreating on public land. In Vermont, the outdoor recreation industry is huge. There's, I think fishing alone has over $130 million of economic impact here in Vermont. On top of hunting and fishing and wildlife watching, that's something that's really important. And I think it's important for, especially our rural communities that are out there, that it's not being, all that economic effort isn't going into just your population centers. It's going out in these surrounding communities. I actually just ate dinner tonight at Franklin's. That's a sole reason, you know, that I think it's really important to not just think of what's going on in your own town, but also beyond that for the recreational value and the economics that are involved with bringing people into your community to spend money. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk.
Oh, thank you for making the long trip down. I believe it's Kim Blodgett?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I'm actually not also a resident of Proctor, so I realize that what I have to say probably doesn't weigh too heavily with you folks. But I did want to thank you for holding this land for all the years that you have. It's an amazing piece of land. And encourage you to look into, I mean, I think the other speakers have said everything that I would have said and I echo what they say. But I'd also encourage you to look into seeing if there's other more conservation-oriented buyers who would leave the land open for public access. I think there are some organizations out there who might help facilitate that. I'm not sure what the cost difference would be, but there's so many other benefits to that property that may outweigh some of the differences that I think it should be something that would be considered. So thank you again for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mike Covey?
Hello, thanks for the opportunity to have a conversation with you folks here tonight. I won't take too much of your time, but I'm also from Williamstown. Made the drive down here. I'm the executive director of an organization called the Vermont Traditions Coalition. So we've been advocating for 18 years for public land access, snowmobiling, hunting, fishing, trapping, forestry, all of those things that keep Vermonters connected to the landscape. I just wanted to, in case you folks haven't gotten the full breadth of it yet, talk about a recent report that came out. So Vermont is ranked fourth in terms of the economic benefit of our outdoor recreation. You know, there are three states that have a more significant economic input from outdoor recreation. Of those, snow sports being skiing and snowmobiling are the leading economic contributor. And then hunting, trapping, and shooting are grouped together and that's the second. So you have this huge, great property that provides access to national forest, to the Chittenden Town Forest. They can provide all these recreational opportunities on top of allowing you to get a significant economic return from your forestry practices. And that, that return, you know, if you're looking at $400,000 over 10 years, what's that return over time? And we need to be having a really broad view of where we're going to go with our public land, with all of our open land. And look at this not on a 10-year timeframe, but on a 200-year timeframe. How much is that going to benefit the community over that time? Especially as land gets chopped up and, you know, we continue to develop and we continue to have more homes on the landscape, more incursion. Over the long haul, you can't really afford to sell off the future for a mere 1.5 million. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andy, did you want to add anything? No, thank you. Not sure, I can't read the last name, but it's Bill and you signed in down at the bottom of the page, front page. Oh, Bill New. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
Well, you know, sometimes those N's are difficult. I also thought I'd stick around if there's anything I can address. I only have a couple of points. In light of this, it's important that we all understand that you have to decide what's right for the town of Proctor. And Mr. Gerlach totally supports that. What has happened is that this has created a huge amount of interest in a limited number of people. We are aware that there are Proctor residents who think that this is not public land, this is Proctor land. And that this is an asset and we're subsidizing it because of our taxes in order for the rest of the public to get a benefit out of it. If the state wants to buy it, the state ought to buy it. It shouldn't be a burden on the people of Proctor. And they should look at what the opportunity is for what was offered. And that was the only way in which Mr. Gerlach came, that perhaps this was a win-win for everybody. He strongly supports that this is all about Proctor deciding what they should do with this and what is the right decision. And the idea of a public vote is exactly what we have supported and expected would be the outcome of what this is. The last time I was here, I indicated that underneath the statute, in order to convey marketable title, if you're going to have a vote, you need to have a contract, which is why there was a written offer. You can't do it by a generic ballot item because that could authorize you to do negotiations. But when you finally had a contract, in order to get title insurance for it, I've spoken to one of the state's leading people on title insurance that we get title insurance from, said you have to comply with the statute and you'd have to go through the same rule of 30 days, 5% of the people petition, you'd have to have another vote. So the idea was to find out whether or not we could actually come up with a contract. I mean, everybody is assuming that you can come up with a contract, but, and Mr. Gerlach has offered some amount of money to help pay for an attorney to see if the town, and he could come to terms. You may not be able to come to terms. And then all of this energy and all of what's going on is for something that's not out there until you actually have a contract. So to the extent that we thought there would be a town meeting, at the town meeting to vote on it, that's what there, we know there are Proctor residents that support the idea of selling it and being able to invest the money and get the return of 3% to 8% net. It's totally up to you to figure out what's right for you. And Mr. Gerlach only wanted to participate so that there could be a discussion about that and not get in the middle as if he's a bad guy and he's going to just trash the property, which is totally contrary to anything. There's been an awful lot of things that have been suggested that are not true and he really has felt that he's been not quite treated fairly in terms of how this all came about. When it was a Proctor residence who suggested you ought to speak because four years ago the town of Proctor was interested in looking at selling the property, he wanted to try to make that a possibility. So if there's anything else, I'll stick around in case there's something else to address.
Sure, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Is it true that the adjacent property, the Autobahn Society was supposed to be able to use that property?
No, that's not true. There was a grant and that representation by the Autobahn Society was not accurate. He's trying to create a good working relationship. So if you go to the land records, you can read exactly what the conservation easement is that's on the property and then you'd be able to get the answer. I don't want to get into a dispute about that. I think that's just, again, another example.
Doug? Okay. Dave Dunton?
I'm also, thank you.
Kate Warner?
Hello again, Kate Warner with the Trust for Public Land. I came here a couple of weeks ago to discuss the potential opportunity to sell the Green Mountain National Forest. And I applaud... Um, and I applaud that you are considering taking this to a, a town vote and get, um, their preference. I really think it is important to understand what the citizens of Proctor want. Um, I, you've heard from a lot of people about what some of the rest of the people across the state want, um, and I hope you take that into consideration, but it's also important to know what your citizens want. Um, I just wanted to make a point, um, I, I also applaud the second article that you have drafted, um, but I would like to make a suggestion for a small change, um, to that article, uh, to avoid potentially shooting yourself in the foot if you do end up wanting to sell to Greenmount National Forest. Um, so right now, the, the draft article includes the, the words, um, "vote to limit the sale," um, and if, if, um, if both of those articles are voted yes, and you basically self-limit yourself to sell to either a public entity or, um, an entity that will keep it open for public use or, or preserve its resources, potentially that could negatively affect the appraisal, um, that Greenmount National Forest does to purchase the property. If you've self-limited yourself that way, if it's not open, um, to, to the public market, even if you to, if you do intend to sell to Greenmount National Forest, you don't wanna officially limit yourself to only selling to a public entity. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, so what I would suggest, um, is to change the word "limit" to "vote to express preference for," so that you still get, um, information from the public on their preference of selling to a public entity or a private entity, but you're not officially limiting yourself to only selling to the public entity. Um, the other, and, uh, besides the potential effect on the appraisal, um, in order for the Greenmount National Forest and the Trust for Public Land to help secure the federal funds needed to, um, add it to Greenmount National Forest, we need to demonstrate threat to the property, and the last two months have de- definitely demonstrated threat, um, in terms of it being sold to a private entity and, um, and potentially, you know, public use shut off and, and other things happening on the property. But if you limit, you self-limit yourself, then that threat is diminished. Um, so I just recommend to kind of tweak that language a little bit.
Wow. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dave Carmen?
Uh, just wanted to, uh, just say that, uh, you know, I don't think the town was really ready to have a sale, and I think we're unprepared to, uh, have the time necessary to know the full value of that property. You know, what are the value, what's the value of the aquifer and the water? How can we extract the water? Can it be possibly, you know, instead of trucking, can it be, you know, piped out of, of the aquifer? Is that a possibility? Uh, the other thing too is, uh, you know, as a water source, uh, are the wells we have in town, is that secure a hundred percent? And if, uh, let's say they get polluted for any reason, could we go back to the aquifer that's up there? Um, the, the Greenmount National Forest, I think that might be a good idea to, to possibly, if there was a, a sale, a sale, to, uh, look at that as an option instead of private. Um, and could we possibly lease the property? Could be leased to a bottling company that could extract water from, uh, that source up there. Um, you know, I think the, the biggest thing i- is, uh, having enough time to know, like I said, the value of the property, what's there, 'cause I don't, I don't, really don't think that we have enough time, uh, with these deadlines that are put into place, you know, uh, when he says that, okay, you have until November fifteenth, and then you have until what, is it December, December first? What's the deadline right now? Has it been extended? Has it closed? Do we know, do we really know what, what's going on? Has it been extended, or what?
No, it just had been acted on.
Okay, so it's ba- it basically expired, and so is it a moot point? Is he still interested? I guess he's still interested, 'cause his attorney was here. Um, you know, are, are we gonna be up against all these deadlines that are artificial? Or, you know, I'll just, I think it's good to know that, uh, you know, I think we should get more time to really know what's, what's out, what's out there, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't think having, you know, a two-week deadline is appropriate, so. Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Joe Manning? Okay, well, I certainly appreciate all the...
Anybody else?
Yep, there anybody else that didn't get to, uh, sign in on the, our signup sheet that wanted to speak? Don't see anybody.
Wait, can I just ask you one question?
Can you come up here so we can hear you, please?
Can I, can I just ask for somebody from the board just to explain why we are considering the sale of this land? Is it, you know, strictly financial? Is it a, a, you know, piece of property that's a burden to us? We just, why did it come up, and why are we considering it?
Well, I think it just, it just happened, and we figured before we made any decisions that we needed to do some, uh, studying and, uh, or do our due diligence, but there was nothing that was really, uh, I don't think any one of us really had any thoughts of it.
I think it was just an offer made to us, and we, as a board, decided that we would take a look at it.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
But nothing really driving it to...
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, the next item is, uh, our special town meeting. Would you wanna speak on that, Stan?
I'll speak on it, and Alan can...
Yes.
I'll speak about the physical. It's, it's set up that if you were to pass a resolution tonight to hold a special town meeting, about the earliest you could do it would be January thirteenth, if not less than thirty days or more than forty days to advertise. So it's, that's, that's how the thirteenth got picked. The high school got picked because traditionally you have met at the town meeting at the high school. However, there's a basketball game at the high school that night. We've been in touch with the elementary school, we haven't heard back as to whether that is available on that night, or that either facility may be available on another night. So the question of date and time is still...
Up in the air.
Up in the air. Uh, the date of the two articles, and I'd let Alan speak to those as to why they're written the way they're written.
Do you wanna hear it? Sure, naturally. Uh, the first of the two articles is essentially the one I proposed initially, and it really encompasses everything that's in the second article, but it is terse, uh, it is lawyer talk more than it is a public talk. Uh, I'll read it, because I think a lot of people in the room haven't seen these articles. Article one, shall the town vote to authorize the select board to sell all or less than all of the interests the town holds in its watershed lands in Chittenden, Vermont, for a price not less than one point five million dollars. Now that speaks to authorizing the sale, conveyance, of all of the interest in property, and let me say, from a lawyer's perspective, of property rights are a bundle of rights. Uh, the lawyers in the room will recognize that we deal with a concept called fee simple absolute that references everything that is in, in the ownership interests in a piece of land. Lesser interests can be conveyed or retained. Uh, in this area, marble rights were frequently by marble, by Vermont Marble Company reserved, not, not transferred to the person buying a house. Water rights are another, uh, element. These are profit upon, uh, interests. They're different than easements, they're much more, uh, meaningful interests. They're interests that have tangibility, transferability, uh, and durability. They don't go away unless you put a time limit on them, uh, but if they're conveyed, uh, the recipient of the water right, uh, the timber rights, the mineral rights, holds o- holds those interests forever. Uh, so, this language authorizes a town to sell that whole bundle of rights, or some lesser quantity of those rights and reserve rights, as it may choose. It would accommodate virtually all of the concerns that were heard, hearing expressed this evening, uh, that there are different interests that you might want to, uh, hold on to. Sell the property to a public organization, uh, and sell all of the development rights? Fine. Sell the whole fee? Fine, that's your choice. Sell to a private enter- enterprise? Withhold the water rights, the timber rights, mineral rights, hunting and fishing authority? Require that there be easements to permit the public to have access? All of this can be done. So, that's what Article one would enable. Article two simply expresses the same concepts, basically, in more understandable lay terms. Uh, I agree, the word "limit" perhaps isn't the best word. The word "entity" is not necessarily the best word all by itself, you might say, to a person or entity. I guess we haven't read that language, have we? If Article one is approved, shall the town vote to limit the sale of the watershed lands in Chittenden, Vermont, for a price of not less than one point five million dollars to an entity that will keep the land open for public use or permit the town to preserve its resources. Same idea, the idea of transferring all the rights or all some of the rights, or retaining rights. So those are the language, those, the, the, that is the language in the two articles. Uh, it is very simple, very plain, frankly. Uh, I would comment on Mr. Mueb's remark about having to, later, at the time you have a contract, have another town vote if it's petitioned. If, if the, if five percent of the, of the citizens petition, yes, you would. These are essentially precatory authorities. You're asking to get the sense of the public. What's the public's interest? What does a town want? This whole concept was sprung on you, and you wanna have the town sharing the decision-making. Very reasonable, very acceptable, so. You have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer. Well, thanks for the explanation on, on both of the articles, and, uh, I think we'll work, uh, and see, uh, a, a working date that will work, uh, with a meeting place, uh...
Uh, Cecilia's gonna be away January eighteenth through the twenty-ninth, so that's, that's either before or after that it is. But I think it, it would be good to do it as a special town meeting and not try to do it at your regular town meeting.
Yes.
Because it'd take up a lot of time.
Yes.
We need some more room, I think, too.
Yeah. Yes. So, let's see what we can work out, uh, for a meeting location.
What's the first day she was gone? Eighteenth?
Eighteenth through the twenty-ninth.
When do you think you'll hear back from the elementary school?
There's an email that went to Jake, that said, "What's going on?" Now, he's not, he's not there every day.
Yeah, so, must have some information.
Um, I'm sorry, what would be the reason that we would need a special meeting as opposed to having it at a regular town meeting? If the goal is to have as many people present and to have an open and transparent conversation, wouldn't it be in our best interest to have it during a regular town meeting?
You mean wait till March?
Right. I, I, I just, it, it seems to me that you don't have all the information, um, from the investment houses. Um, when I was here at the meeting, you asked for information. I don't see that, maybe you have it in your packets tonight, um, and you're gonna talk about it in the next, um, but they said fifteen days, so I'm doubtful. Um, but I'm just curious, why the rush? Why not? If we think this is an important conversation to have with all town residents, at this time of year, knowing that we have inclement weather, that the gyms are both busy every single night with games, with practice, that it's going to limit when we can be in there, why wouldn't we just have it at our regular town meeting? And if you have to go an extra forty-five minutes or an hour, as many times as you've talked about it here at a board meeting, doesn't it warrant having that with everyone at a regular town meeting being a participant in the conversation?
I think we'll give some consideration, uh, we just, uh, wanted to move ahead.
Yeah, if we're already going to late January at this point, which we will be.
Let's, uh, we'll talk about it. Yeah, we'll have some discussion on, on, on a date, so.
Can you comment on the verbiage specifically?
Well, I mean, should we change it to express preference for as opposed to limit? Alan?
No, but there's no reason why you wouldn't, and that's acceptable.
All right.
You might also say "person" or "entity," because many people don't realize the word "entity" means a being, uh, which includes a person, but... Yes, Mr. Mueb?
Yes, I'd like to just offer a couple of comments, uh, that Mr. Gerlach is certainly in favor of as many people participating, and believes that the annual meeting is probably the best place in which that should occur. Uh, I also think that gives you time to take a look at your possible resolutions. Um, if you're looking to sell it, for instance, Article number two, uh, you, they're only gonna pay fair market value, and you may want to talk about, uh, sell it at fair market value to a public entity as long as it generates at least X amount of dollars, because you may get a debate about whether we hold it, or whether we'd rather sell it for eight hundred thousand dollars or five hundred thousand dollars to a public entity if that's what the fair market value comes in. And that would perhaps give you time to even get, if you wanted, a current appraisal on what it is, because there've been challenges to the appraisal that seems to have been raised. There's all kinds of issues, speculation about the water, all these kinds of things that have an inflated value, that we believe that the fair market value of the property is liable to be less than what Mr. Gerlach has offered. So, I, I just look at that, because as I said, his effort is to try to get to whatever is right and come up with the best decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've covered the timber harvest projections, uh...
Everybody's now, it's four hundred thousand plus or minus over the next ten-year period.
Yeah.
Is what we're looking at. Is there any action as far as special town meeting, just to hold it, or no? You want to wait till March?
I'm fine with it, Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Cheaper for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, no, I couldn't hear what you said for the minutes.
Waiting to hold off until the annual meeting in March to have the meeting.
Consensus, not a necessity, unless you're on a motion, but...
Well, we're not adopting the article.
Yeah, we haven't tried.
Yeah. So, not yet.
Yep, and... And so, we've still got to meet with somebody regarding the investments.
Yeah, the Vermont Community Foundation could not make it last Thursday.
Yep.
And she was, would be available this Thursday if you wanted to have a special meeting to interview her.
I thought we decided at the last meeting not to.
I thought we decided two was enough.
Yeah.
Okay, there wasn't.
Yeah, I thought we did.
There was no real difference between.
Right.
Not really, no.
Don't want to look at the land trust, then?
If they wanted to send us some information, we could look at it.
You've got their information.
Yep.
Because the question is, yeah, of course, now you're not, we're about 15 days, so.
Right, yeah, yep.
Which will be to do a selection at some point.
Okay, I guess the next thing on their agenda here is good stuff. Hopefully, this changeable weather isn't going to tax our highway department, what have you. They've been doing a fantastic job this year. And there was a nice turnout for the Santa train and. Anything else we wanted to add?
Yes, again, the new, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
The new streetlights are nice. Kudos on the new streetlights.
I just wanted to mention the Christmas tree lighting Sunday, 15th at 6:00 PM, cookies and caroling in the firehouse. We'll have cookies.
We'll let them clean out here a little bit.
Well, she can move up here, let's keep moving along.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, highway department.
They have been doing a good job, Stan?
Yes.
Thank you.
We've been a little bit of sick and a little bit of deer hunting.
A little bit of what?
A little bit of sickness and a little bit of deer hunting.
Oh, well, that happens in Vermont, yeah.
Yes.
And down at the bottom, I left a blank of 15 hours of overtime. This doesn't count John.
Chris, can you just ask folks to?
We're still having a meeting, folks. We're still having a meeting.
So, I have no idea what you just said.
Why don't you come on in?
Yeah.
We're just in the highway department.
Did you get through the good stuff?
I heard the Santa train, that was it.
I meant, I'm just going to say what I said.
Oh, streetlights.
We're having the Christmas tree lighting on Sunday, in the gazebo with caroling and cookies and hot chocolate afterwards in the fire department, 6:00 PM.
Okay, highway department again, yes.
The 15 hours of overtime.
15 hours of overtime. What I was saying is John does not get paid overtime.
Yep.
He doesn't show up in there, but he does all of the weekends.
Right.
The road checks on weekends and hits it up and down. So, the number of hours is down from what it could have been over the last two weeks.
Yeah, I see that a lot.
Well, yeah, that's, that's great.
Just highlighting some of the things, unless you have questions. Beaver Pond, we still do a weekly check on the dam, just to be sure everything is working well. We reviewed the highway department's susceptibility to flooding, and really did not find a lot of places in Proctor where we have a problem. This is part of a statewide, so we were just one community filling out information on a map. So, there wasn't anything spectacular that we had to offer. Dugout driveway on West Street. We had an individual who built a new driveway so it could accommodate tractor trailers on a U-turn. He did not have a permit. He was talked to at the time and said, "You've got to get a permit." He was given a permit form. He was told that probably part of the permit was going to require a culvert. He didn't put the culvert in. The water washed out onto the road, created a slick. And the guys went down and dug out his driveway. He did give me a call, he wasn't very happy. But he realizes that he's got to have a permit in order to do construction or have a driveway. So, that was an easy one to make a decision on. When we saw the ice, we had to do something about it.
You going to bill him for that?
John has kept a record of what has cost us. When he comes in for the permit, we will set the permit fee adequately.
Good plan.
We're getting salt on a reasonable basis. And our track for the backhoe, that's an annual event that they come in and check the computer and read outs, and tell us whether we need to do any maintenance on it. And again, winter weather has cleaned the garage, cleaned the equipment, serviced the equipment. But we're still dealing with FEMA for, sorry, storm damage. I had a call from a gentleman last Friday. Haven't gotten back to him. He wants to come back down, and so we can fill out some more forms. Questions on highway?
Pretty well covered that.
We did submit for a Vermont transportation agency alternative app program, which is the sidewalk. We talked about it before, from Lower Street to Saginaw Mix. The estimated cost was, is $200,000. They will contribute 80% or $160,000. And the town would be up for $40,000. We haven't heard back on this one, they just weren't in. But I just keep you informed that we're still trying to get the sidewalks done, piece by piece, and that's the way it's going to be.
I think we just had the traffic ordinance on there.
That's on hold, that's just a placeholder.
A placeholder.
So, where are we in that? Is it, are we just waiting for you to put in the streets?
We're waiting for me to put the information in that you've given me. I'm afraid that the time constraints of the last couple of weeks have made a dent in some of my backup materials. So, it's a matter of stopping Chittenden property and get on to something else.
Yes. Okay, anything else for highway that anyone has? Okay, a motion to go into Board of Water Commissioners.
Salute.
All those in favor?
The listing of the current activities is reasonably comprehensive into what they're supposed to be doing. The activities in progress and activities planned or needed. We're trying to set up a meeting with the water sewer guys, with John and myself, and do a program schedule to address these. Most of them have been sitting there for the last nine months. So, it's time to give birth to some of them.
Just a note, the way I count, we're up to six hydrants that don't meet flow or are out of service.
Yes. Three of them is going to be permanently out of service. The other three should be back into service.
Right, and the number is slowly climbing here, though. We aren't fixing them.
Most of those probably are going to hold off till.
Well, the one on Patch Street is trying to find out why it doesn't work.
Is there another one near there? Is there another one near there?
It's, there's one at the wastewater treatment plant, and there's one up on E Street.
And the one on Patch Street doesn't work at all, or?
Not getting any, I mean.
Yeah, zero.
Flow out of it.
Right, but I mean, they could still use it.
I don't think, this one, I don't think they can, from what I know.
It's that bad.
It doesn't, it can't draw even 300 gallons, submitted 50 pounds, something less than that.
They should have good pressure there.
Yeah.
There's a mechanical problem someplace. But they've pulled the guts out of the whole hydrant and put it back together.
So, it must be the valve, then?
The valve, the shower valve to it has been turned on and off. I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is.
Okay, we're going to dig it up? What are we going to do?
We're going to have to dig it up eventually, yes.
Okay, water system improvements.
One event, and you've got a copy of a letter that I put on your table today. The bid valid period expired. This letter went to Veldman, asking them if they would extend the bid valid period. And I have not heard back from them yet. I put in a call here today, and I think they're busy doing something else. But anyway, just to let you know that they're there. If they don't accept it, then we would be having to look at re-advertising again. So, just to keep you aware of what's going on.
Delinquent accounts?
This is an up-to-date as of the end of November. They have some new people showing up that aren't keeping them. Most of these people, Celia or Rhoda, will be calling, saying, "You missed November, you need to catch up." So, people are usually doing it. We did get a new agreement on item number seven. She did come in, and she has raised it to $100 a month, which won't pay it off. However, she claims that the house will be up for sale this spring, which will clear it up. And again, we have a number of them on there, which are foreclosures, or estates, or other ways that we're going to get our money back.
So, does number 12 mean that, 12, 13, that they're going to pay?
12, 13, he's going to be in and pay two months' worth. That's when he gets his check. A number of people have come in and paid off completely, so they have disappeared off the list. And again, I drew the line at a thousand. There's probably eight to 10 below that line who are keeping up with their payments, and they will be gone before the June 30th.
That is great.
Thirty-one, 15 months, and he's not keeping up with that.
And didn't we say that was wrong, wasn't it?
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Fifty-five weekly, a hundred a month, but.
It was supposed to be twice a month.
Yeah.
But again, he did not make, he did not make his payment in November.
No updates on number six?
Six?
No. I didn't even try to update. I don't know where, what the situation is. We need to find out, yes.
And just my opinion, you know, if the girls remind them two or three months in a row, then, you know, they're just wasting their time.
Stop the reminders.
Yeah, stop reminding them. They've got better things to do than.
That's true, and, but I'm afraid they have a heart. That's the reason that they're doing it, yep. And once they do one, then they've got to do them all. I think I agree with you. I wouldn't bother to call them, I'd just show up at the big scene, pay them, and go from there.
Okay, anything else for water? Yes?
No.
Okay, a motion to go into Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Avowed.
Seconded.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
I think one of the items here is number six.
Yeah.
And the do not flush pamphlet. We've got addition one and addition two. The intent is to send them out with the billing, but that's next July. And I think what he is, Chris is suggesting is we get them out there sooner than that. And I suppose I could put them on the website, but do we do a special mailing? What he's finding is a lot of wipes and a lot of stuff that they have to go in and clean out.
I think a special mailing's in order.
Yeah.
I know they cleaned out the one in front of my house this summer, and it was a mess, you know, they were flushing. Amazing.
So, maybe it'd be a good investment to put out a special mailing to.
About $200, $250 for a bulk mailing.
How much is it, though, to repair these?
Yeah.
There were some available at the state level, but there's not enough for us to do what we need to do here.
No, what I think Carrie's saying is it's more cost-effective to send the mailing out than to keep repairing it and keep flushing it.
Yes. Although I don't think it's really going to make an impact.
Yeah, and it just damages the pump, and puts extra wear on that. So, yeah, let's send out a mailer.
And I'm still waiting for a proposal from Alderton Elliott to go in and do a study next summer for the lagoon liners.
Good. Yep, that's an important thing that we need to get done.
Anything else for wastewater? Okay, let's move back to regular select board and things. I think everybody has signed their orders. Police Service Coverage Committee, is that?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Yes, appreciate it. There been any meetings scheduled, or?
No, but I, we do need to chat, and I think we need to set up a time with them.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially facing this new increase.
Right, exactly.
And is it a feasible?
14%.
Yeah, that's a big jump.
Yeah.
And then I can certainly see his point, too. You know, it's been quite a few years, but 14 at once is a lot.
Insurance has impacted a lot, though.
Yeah, and the other thing, if you would ask them. I happened to be there at the office the other day. And find out what the level of their personnel is as to what they can do. There's apparently three levels, one, two, and three. And that's kind of, might be advisable to just find out.
You mean to reduce the cost of who's on?
Are you talking about what they're authorized to do?
Right.
Yes, yeah, what they're authorized to do, yeah, just to.
Well, we already know that they would need to increase their crew by at least one in one cruiser. We already know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're talking about Pittsburgh.
Yes.
Yeah, but to find out, you know, if, you know, if they've only got one person at level three, which is the most effective level. If they've got just one three, that means that a lot of times that one person will. Yeah, so, just, just a thing to ask, sort of, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know there was different levels.
No, I didn't either, still.
Yeah, in New York, they call it peace officer versus law enforcement versus, and they can all do different things. For example, like a peace officer in New York can only arrest somebody if they witness the crime. They can't based on anybody else's say. As opposed to a police officer can.
Yeah, some domestic assaults and what have you goes for one. You can go to two levels, and then that person has to stop until a supervisor comes along to finish it up and what have you. So, okay, Peterson Fund Investments.
Okay, what you've got in front of you are the rates for various CDs. Again, it's a matter of $20,000 that matured. It's a matter of putting it back in. The question is, do you want to do it for a one-year period or spread it out? I think the advice that we got before was. I think the advice that we got before was, you'll put it all into one year, and look at it a year from now.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't think we...
That's what your motion is to...
Should we do this with the bank to lower our take rate? As these CDs come due, move them?
Probably not enough to, this little amount, you know...
We're not getting charged for these.
Right, and we've already got the best rate we can have.
We're not making a lot of interest, yeah.
Yeah, so, that, uh...
What I included in your packet was some history on it.
Yeah.
As to where it came from, and what the restrictions are.
It's a nuclear lead.
And some of the past expenses that have been taken out of it over the years.
Because there was nothing in the original agreement that said you couldn't spend, you know, the prin, part of the principal.
Right, but we try not to.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
All right.
So I will tell Celia to do a review for forty thousand, we go from there.
And on the table was that fraud risk assessment.
That was, that was new information that you haven't seen.
Yeah, so...
Actually, this is a do-it-yourself thing, rather than spend the five thousand with that company.
So, maybe it's something more appropriate to look this over and then cover it at our next meeting and please?
Yeah.
See whether we wanna...
Kind of important.
Yeah.
What Celia and I are looking for is to have it done.
Yeah.
So that we can, well, one is to get confidence in this, with the select board, but two is to get it off the checklist for the audit, which is gonna be... Essentially, a lot of the horsework is gonna go to the board.
Or do we wanna just step up to the plate and do it? Make a commitment to do it, or do you wanna read it over?
Well, I think, I have no problem making a commitment to do it. But I think we do need to take some time to read it over before we can...
Yeah.
And, and I would invite Rick Brigham to come down, at least for a preliminary, before you sign the contract. Need to know what's your, what's your type.
I mean, we have to do it, so let's do it.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Um, we ask quite a few people to come out on bad nights to come down and see us, you know?
Yeah.
We need to make that easier. We need to look into a video, face-to-face, on the phone there, it doesn't cut it, you know, but to have some lady come all the way down from Napier tonight by herself, you know, that's asking a lot, so...
I mean, we've done phone...
Not enough, yeah.
But, you know, I'm having a conference call tomorrow, which is the next item on the agenda. Two people are gonna be Skyping, and I'm gonna be listening to the phone.
Right, we, we need to...
It'd be nice, it's nice to have a body in front of you.
It is. And this is, you know, times move forward, we gotta keep up with them.
Tommy, if you wanna move forward, we could all have iPads, and all of this paper would be on an iPad.
Well, that's another thing we might wanna think about. But a budget, we'll, we'll discuss at a budget time, 'cause we're, that's...
Middlebury has active TV for their meetings, i.e., they have a screen up here, and they're broadcasting it out, and people can contact them and ask questions, rather than having them come to the audience.
I, I'm not quite ready for that.
Well, I don't think you're ready to pay the tab for it either.
Well, probably not that, yeah. But, uh, you know, some of these people that we asked to come down, to Skype with them, or do whatever, maybe we would get better responses to. Budget time, we'll talk about it.
Okay, you've covered the mitigation thing with your...
Well, I have a conference call today. It's a conference, conference call tomorrow with Vermont Bedros, to talk about the possible application for a FEMA grant. And we zeroed in on the box culvert that runs from Beaver Pond underneath the mill building into the creek, as being one that we highlighted in our local hazard mitigation report. We had three items in there, one was that one, the other was Willow Street, which is being worked on through the state, and the other one was generators for the, for the high school and the elementary school, that were gonna be used for shelters. Uh, we tried for a generator at the well pump back in two thousand fifteen, and we got denied because we couldn't come up with a cost-benefit ratio of one, because we didn't have enough power outages. In reality, we have very few power outages, but in order to establish a full-time shelter, you need to guarantee you're gonna have power, so. So we pushed that one out, and we got down to the, the simple one, which is just a preliminary engineering, which shouldn't be too hard, so we're gonna go through that tomorrow, and hopefully get an application in by January eighth to apply for that. That's a seventy-five percent grant, however, the state will kick in some money too, so it ends up at about a twelve and a half percent. They kick in the other, half of the twenty-five percent local share. So, it would be good to know what the condition that, uh, box culvert's in all the way through.
Been a long time since somebody...
I talked with people who have crawled down through somewhere.
Oh, town office.
Okay, I put the email from right, saying tomorrow they will be there putting up rails.
I promise.
And then, then I'll have to shovel it if Tom doesn't do it. I expect to see them there, and that will, they're not gonna be painted, they're gonna be galvanized, they'll have to come back and paint in the spring, but at least they'll be there so that you can use it.
Yes.
As a public place, at least partially. We'll still have to put the notice in there that somebody needs assistance, uh, to get them up there.
It's been a long one.
Yes. Uh, renovation...
A positive note on the resident renovation grant.
Excellent news.
I'm waiting to hear from the governor's office when they are going to hand out the certificates, the arrears. And so, we're not supposed to say anything about it until such time as the governor calls us to, wherever, to have a ceremony and give us that big check like I brought back from, from the front wall. And just a, just a note, you, you might read all the conditions that we have to meet in order to get it done, which are not onerous, it's just...
Didn't seem to be.
You just check them off.
We haven't heard from that gentleman that was down the other day, the one oh six.
Oh, no, that was the, the phase one environmental site assessment. Which is looking for spills or... I mean, he was happy because we're a small lot, and it's been a, a public building.
Thing for, forever.
For years and years and years, so that, it wasn't an industrial site converted to a public building, and the buildings around it are in the same course, and he's not gonna look across the road. So that, once we get that report, then we send that into, uh, the state, and they will tell us if we need to do anything more to complete this environmental review. Uh, the indication that I've had talking with them is that, no, this should take care of it, and then we will be authorized to go off a bid.
Okay, uh, junk vehicles.
Uh, I did, have not sent out the letters, but I have, by the grapevine, one person knew that he was on the list, and he came in and said he will take care of it. I don't know how he got that information.
I don't have a clue.
Twenty-two terrorists, I still got the letter sitting on my desk, I haven't hand-carried, I've left a couple of voice messages, but nobody has come to pick it up.
Sheriff's Department list, that's all tied together.
It's all, it's a matter of typing up a form letter, and then getting someone downstairs to help me pick them out, because there's thirty of them.
Oh, um... Town manager search, wanna think that over, or do you wanna go full boat with the, uh, VLCT?
If I remember correctly, we weren't budgeted to go a full boat with, uh, VLTC, but...
What, what you put in the budget, originally I had eight thousand in there for VLTC, we got it back to two thousand, which was the, uh, little assistance plus the background check. I mean, that was the most important thing.
Right, yeah.
And you had seven thousand in for transitioning me to him, that's in the current budget, so you got nine thousand in the current budget. You could cut back on the transition time, or you could, you could bump the transition time into January, into July, and put it in next year's budget.
Yeah.
Or we could have a, you know, find a place to save another five thousand dollars, which I'm sure that we could, we could, can come out with, we've had a surplus every year for the last six years.
I mean, it's kinda nice that they do all the correspondence, but they've changed their way, so they're, they don't even look at any resumes, so it's not like they're filtering through and going, oh, here's the top twenty candidates, let's give it to you, they, here they are, how, forty of them, and you figure out who you want.
I got the impression that they were gonna put some type of a check mark...
Yeah.
Against the job description, or against the minimum requirement, so, but you would know that when somebody, if you said had to have a master's or approved equal...
Yeah, that, that's...
They, they would check off, say, yes, they do.
Yeah.
Well, the impression I got was that they give us a blank checklist, and we could check those things off. That's, that's what I heard.
Yeah, 'cause she said, when I talked, she said, we don't give you any info as to who the top candidates are, or who to...
I mean, they'll make a template for us that says, does this person have this, 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 but it's up to us to check off the box.
I don't know, I think we've got an awful lot on our plate, maybe it'd be good to...
Well, I think, I think we need to, to get the job description.
Yeah, yeah.
She, she was very clear, that was the first thing that we need to do.
Yes, exactly.
So I think that needs to be priority one, not that we don't have a lot of other priorities, but...
There's a local person that does that as well, and I'm trying to think of her name, it has just slipped me. But she's from the area, and she does all of that, helps you make the job description, um, interviews, the first interview, gives you, checks off the boxes, brings it, there is a local person that does that. I have to think of her.
Or a fee.
Well, of course, it's always a fee, but...
Do you wanna email us when you, when you figure it out?
Right, I'll, I'll send you an email, but...
Good.
Yeah, we shouldn't just let it hang on, no.
Well, it was nice to hear say that we, you know, we were...
Yes, we've got time.
On our part-time lines here, so...
Okay, town report, one of the things that we've gotta, uh, think about is, uh, you know, at least start maybe with a front picture, and Dale, did you talk with Dale yet?
Talked with Dale. He, he had the pictures he took, and I think he had forwarded to everybody.
Yeah.
Yes.
With, with the streetlights and the snow, uh, what we asked him was, can you get the Caris building into the picture? Or the lights in front of the Caris building in the picture? And then the credits at the bottom of it, but that's, he's, he's gonna think about what he could get. But it was, it was a winter scene rather than a summer scene for a change. So that's just...
If you get the Caris signed in there, it'd even...
But that's, that's just one suggestion.
Yeah.
It's wide open as to what you think should be on the cover, uh, whether you anticipate doing a dedication to anybody as part of it. But the big thing is I will be sending out notices to all of the, uh, organizations, asking for their reports, and I would ask for one. Uh, I did get contacted by Mary Fegosi today, asking what the, what the date was that we would be looking for, the request from the library. I said, within the next couple of weeks, it would be nice to have it, and she said that would be no problem. But then the other part of it is, is getting the reports, but those come in in January, I've got, I've got a lot of the civic organizations, what I needed the town organizations.
Make sure they're out before the town meeting. No, I'm serious, last year they weren't.
I know.
People are getting them...
Well, Relling got hot water there, didn't it?
Hey, ours are out already.
Yeah, well, we need to get, we need to get more than seven days' delivery time.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that was the issue.
Right, it was, yeah, they were out, but they didn't mail them.
Which surprised me.
No, I, uh, Celia and I have talked again, similar to what we talked about, uh, three or four years ago, of putting a article on the town meeting ballot, which says, reports are available to town office.
That's, most towns do that now.
Yeah, it's very common.
Or online.
Yeah, nobody mails them anymore.
But that's, I mean, I just throw it out there, it's, uh, how many people use them? And it's not because of distribution, because it's that, that's a matter of timing. And the, the cost difference, it costs us three thousand dollars to print the thing, and it costs us, uh, four hundred and fifty to mail it.
I don't think we should mail any, if you want them, stop and pick one up, you know? Maybe we could cut our, we could cut our number down ninety percent, I'll bet.
Do you guys, do you guys go out for a bid, like RFP for those of you?
We haven't gone out for three years.
You should, 'cause that's outrageous, sorry. I'm serious though, 'cause we print three, we print what, three thousand? And it just costs slightly over that, so...
We print, you know, seven, eight hundred.
Yeah, so you shouldn't be paying three thousand dollars.
We, yeah, we went out for a bid about three years ago, we haven't been out for the...
Yeah, I would do an RFP.
We took their, rolled their price, they guaranteed the price, the same price the second year.
Gotta find some ways to cut the budget.
But I, I think we oughta cut down the number of paper copies of it, and...
I don't think we should mail. Well, that would have to be approved by the town meeting.
Right, we would have to mail this year.
Yeah.
We absolutely have to mail this year, it's too late to not mail.
Yeah.
So we'll include an article in the warning, though.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Excuse me, I'll make a suggestion, when I was in the Midwest, they used to send out these nice slip-covered annual, uh, reports. And a couple of towns went to getting, uh, their reports printed into a tabloid format. And that's like the size of the TV section in the paper, if you're familiar with that. And it just cut back on the price an amazing amount. So, you know, I know traditionally it's been slip covers, uh, and photographs and things like that, but the, uh, report was on newsprint, a little higher quality newsprint, and it saved, I know the, the community that I was in, saving a ton of money on printing. And since they were printed in that tabloid format, the ones that were mailed, you know, they charge you by weight, these were really light compared to this one, you know, so, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Before I move on from the town report, I have, um, a request, we kinda danced around dedication, we talked about this before. Um, it's lovely to put the lights, um, on the front cover of the town report. I think it's important to honor people that live in our town, people that have, um, done lots and lots for this town, um, in various different ways. And I would, um, request that you dedicate the town report to Nancy Hunter Kennedy this year. Um, I think it's sad when we recognize people after they're gone, we've done that in the past. And, um, I think it's important to recognize people and the work and dedication they've given to the community while they're here.
Thanks.
I agree.
Better to do it?
Nancy Hunter.
Oh, I, yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've had a picture and... Yeah, we've, we've had a picture and done an inside thing with a picture dedication too, so.
That's what you're going to do.
Right, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Doesn't need to be emotional, because otherwise it'll shock you.
Yeah.
It's going to be a surprise.
We've got our budget reports in a packet, let's get that.
You've got the budget.
Yeah, yeah, but just get through that, do we want to?
I guess the question is how you want to handle it.
Yeah, do we want to have a special meeting to?
I want a special meeting.
Yeah.
Where we can, I can focus on numbers here and not Chittenden and everything else.
You get too much and, you know.
Yeah, and, you know, I can do a meeting anytime of the day or night, I'll make it work, you know.
Yeah.
If after supper works better for everybody, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's definitely the, rather than try to squeeze it, we can't squeeze it into a regular meeting.
Let's do it when everybody can make it, though, let's.
Yeah.
You've got the whole thing, read it, mark it up. I mean, I've come up with, I haven't got the highway, John has been plowing snow instead of coming in.
I understand.
But it's, you know, it's a 5.2% for the general fund. There are items in there that I've just put in, some of them are new this year, some were just increased. I think, yeah, the sheriff's department increases in here. The insurance, health insurance increases are in here, property insurance went down. Workers, workers, that's a good sign, our workers' comp went down, which means that we're not having accidents, we're not doing, we haven't had a workers' comp claim in two years, so.
We're further behind than last year, aren't we? Aren't we further ahead last year at this time?
By the way, yes.
Well, you had done various sections of it.
Right.
And had gone through and approved it.
Right.
But it was, you know, December before I gave you the highway work.
Well, Chittenden is occupying a lot of time.
So it's there whenever you want to.
Let's, let's schedule a date right now and, you know, we can adjust a little bit if somebody needs to.
Christmas Eve?
It's rude, huh? Before that. It's a matter of next week.
I believe, I mean, I'm all ready, so. I've done my, I've done my work, you've got time to catch up.
You want to do next Monday?
Monday's fine.
Or is that not good for people?
Six o'clock?
Yep, at the town office.
I can do earlier if we need to.
Doesn't matter to me. It certainly doesn't matter to me, Monday. Six, good, or?
I can do five, if you want to do five, I can do 4:30. I can get out early.
Five?
Yes.
Next Monday at five, okay.
I'll get home and go, I can't do next Monday.
That was our thinking.
That's why I looked.
And what date would that be?
16th.
Seven is 16.
At five, works for me. And we'll all do some bedtime reading when we'll be ready to go.
Yeah, anything on the sheriff's department report?
I just want to say that I see on here, there's only been one time that they were sitting at the Four Corners and it wasn't during any school release time.
I was at the Proctor Senior Supper and that's, yeah, a gentleman from out of town complained that the Five Corners was dangerous for our kids. Does the school do any patrols or anything?
Nothing controls the kids.
On their way home, yes.
There's sixth grade patrol, they walk kids.
Okay, so did they get onto the Five Corners with them?
I mean, every day is different, whether kids walk on North Patrol or South Patrol, I mean, that's what there is, North Patrol and South Patrol, so. It used to be parents met kids at Franklin's and picked them up, I'm not really sure if they still do that or not, but there's, there are patrols like that, so, and there are kids that walk through Five Corners, of course, because there's a lot of kids that live up on Green Square and who there.
Yeah, that's where he said he didn't see any.
And it's apparently more kids than car traffic, kids jumping out in front of cars.
Well, yeah, he said there was nobody to.
Yeah.
Control them, organize them.
And.
Well, I mean, if they walk on patrol, they, I mean, kids don't have to walk on patrol, they can walk in their little groups, I mean, once they leave, they're, you know.
They're loose.
All right, I'll mention that, too.
I think my other thing, and I'll have to write this to be on the school budget agenda since we're meeting that night, is the other towns have a transportation budget and Proctor does not, so I think we could afford a crossing guard at the Five Corners, it is a dangerous place, and we just do not have the volunteerism that we used to.
I don't see the Five Corners, I see the library a lot, and they could certainly use a crossing guard here.
Yeah, I think that that should be considered in the school budget.
I'm happy to share that, I would also say, though, that when parents are willing to sit in their cars and wait for their children, they have a responsibility also, and they could just as easily, I have a stop sign here, we went through, we wrote the grant, we received all of the safety information, and there's something to be said that, you know, you have a level of responsibility for your community as well, and when you talk about transportation budget, we have a budget as a whole, we don't break budgets down that way because we're core value, we're not individual districts anymore, but I am more than happy to share that, we tried to get crossing guards, I think you know, before, and it's very difficult to hire someone for two hours in the morning or two hours in the afternoon, they're just, there isn't any interest, so.
The sheriffs have people.
To be crossing guards?
Yes. And just to back up a little bit, did, did you mean that we pay for busing in other communities?
Of course, we say, we vote a budget as one.
But we don't bus our children.
We do not bus our children.
But we pay for Mr. Rotland and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, busing, is that correct?
Yes. That was the vote, when you voted.
But we can't have a crossing guard.
I didn't say that, I said, I'm happy to share that, I said, we tried to get crossing guards before and it didn't work, that's what I said.
They do it in Rotland, they get crossing guards down by the middle school.
That's because they have people volunteering.
Those aren't paid positions.
I think so.
I believe they are.
I see a lot of older.
That's where they are.
They're paid.
They're paid.
Yeah.
Those people are paid.
And they're insured and everything, we asked about that once.
Yeah.
They carry school insurance on them and.
Yes.
Nobody, anybody volunteer today was.
No.
Volunteer has become a dirty word, it's never gotten.
Well, with liability today, you know, I'm sure Judy knows this better than anybody, but the first word out of, you know, the lawyer's mouth or the insurance man is liability today.
And that's the problem with kids patrolling, you're asking them to be responsible for somebody else's kids.
Yeah.
That's the problem with it.
You know, at 12 years old.
And in this day and age, it just doesn't work the same as it used to work. Used to work fine.
And less than four or five years ago, it worked just well also, there's been a difference of attitudes on a lot of levels.
Okay, the facilities use agreement for the class of 2024, use the rink for pictures and cookies and crafts with Santa Claus. And the 14th, motion to approve.
Yeah, it is the 14th, I thought you said the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.